I'd like to call the meeting to order and record members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Pinkleton.
Here.
Emily Hatton, McDermott, and Barton, absent.
All right. Open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk in Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in the prominent public view in the office of Lisa Brenton.
Set agenda. All the following items are concerned reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Three point one, additional items in the business to the agenda. Three point two minutes. Three point three, approval of the finance report. Three point three one, approval of purchase order encumbrances. Three point three two, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for fiscal year twenty-six. Three point four, approval of booster club sanctioning requests. Three point five, approval of activity fund. Three point six, approval of activity fund fundraisers. Three point seven, approval of activity fund inter-accounts transfers. Three point eight, approval of board policy procedures. So we should start back with three point one. Any additions? Additional items in the new business to the agenda, sir? Do you have any? Okay? Three point two is minutes of the June twenty-sixth meeting, regular meeting, which was last week. Any questions, gentlemen? Okay, moving on to three point three, approval of finance report for shares.
Okay, I'll start with the gift fund. At the end of FY twenty-four, on June thirtieth, there was three hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-three cents in our gift fund. That was split between five different accounts. In December, we received that thirty thousand dollar gift from Upstate Bank that's deposited into Project Two Fifteen. That's the Upstate Bank five dollars account. And everything's done after paying scholarships and some of the donated money is for the other classroom in Washington and upstate. We now have a balance our gift fund of three oh two, one seventy-three, eighty-nine. That's gift fund. General fund, dust is starting to clear a little bit for the end of the year, but we've still got some handful of things out there, so. But right now, all of the collections we've had in June, or as of the end of June, we collected five hundred twenty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. That's what we did in June. For the year, we collected a total of eighteen million, six hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars. That is an increase in actual collections of about five hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred thirteen dollars. That is due mostly to the one-time school security money. The bill legislature, every three years, five two thousand, and they gave us a hundred eighty-four thousand one-time check when we get the other money to this year. So we had that, and then they paid the, they did the teacher pay raises. We didn't get the factor increase because our finances set and everything totally, so we got a big payment to cover that that went in. It was actually last year's, last year's maybe, I paid this year. So that's where a lot of that, five hundred eighty-six thousand dollar increase is in the general fund. In the building fund, in June, we collected one thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars. For the year, we collected a total of four million, six hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars. That's actually a decrease in total collections or actual collections of one hundred and eleven thousand three hundred sixteen dollars. So you're, I mean, it sounds like a lot, but it's not real significant when you talk about the millions of dollars. So when you look at the building fund revenue ought to be, ought to align with the general fund revenue because it's all percentage-based, five mils, thirty-five mils, you know, statute is there, so that shows that difference. Why general fund so much more because of those one-time payments that the building fund didn't have. Let's kind of do a little bit of discussion on our revenues. Talk about investments a little bit. Everything, I don't know what's changed here. Everything's invested between four point two and four point nine, five percent. Now, the general fund, there's six million, two hundred ninety-six thousand invested. The building fund is three million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars invested. Child nutrition is two hundred thirty-two thousand. Seeking funds, eleven thousand. The gift fund is two hundred ninety-one thousand. Total investment for the district is ten million, ninety-nine thousand dollars. We'll talk about the investments here a little bit on the, talk about some policy stuff. That's how much is invested. And then just a little, talked about a lot of revenue, a little bit of expenditure comparison. We have a covered two hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars less in the general fund than we did in FY twenty-four. We paid a hundred and ten thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars less in the general fund than we did FY twenty-four. A lot of that's because, a lot of decrease is because we flipped some of those expenses over to the building fund, okay? So we look at the building fund. We've uncovered two hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred ten dollars more in the building fund and paid out three hundred thirteen, eight hundred twelve dollars more in the building fund. So you see reduce some of the expenses. We also have the bus purchases involved in that, so maybe a little bit. So all total, when you look at our operating accounts of the building general fund, we have paid two hundred and three thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars more this year than we did last year. Again, remember those, we purchased the buses instead of leasing our route buses, and we paid off the new activity buses instead of doing lease purchase on it. That cost us approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars more than what we would've paid otherwise. So you see that those expenses alone make up for the excess we spent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's the financial report.
Three point three one, purchase order encumbrances.
In the general fund for last year, there's three. Just kind of carrying over. First one, DT spraying lawn care. That's the lawn mowing, the contract last meeting, fifty-five hundred, already did it first meeting in June. Fifty-five hundred dollars payment for that. Half Alfa Electric was here to work on an air conditioning unit at Lincoln. And Peak Environment, several lawn spraying, herbicide and things to weed control, give us forty-nine hundred dollars. So that's last year's. If you want me to keep rolling for the next couple, here.
Three point three two.
For this year, list is long. It's almost all, I mean, primarily it's blanket purchase orders to start the new school year. It's really gone a list, there's a lot of the, just the bills we pay every month, City Alba, Upstate County Treasurer, our auditors, Fire Department, monitoring, fuel, you know, all, all, all the bills that we typically pay. Scroll down to the very bottom. It separates lawn payroll from payroll total. All our payrolls covered in there as well. The only caveat I'd say here is the payroll total may be a little bit low because we still have a couple of teachers to approve that aren't covered there and handful of parents and we have two custodian positions of them that don't need to bill. So that payroll encumbrance will go a lot for school stars as we wrap up those hirings. For the most part, these are all just getting you started, encumbrances is what a lot of that is, so. For the building fund, same thing. They're all pretty much blanket purchasers. There's a couple towards the bottom. PO seventeen is to actual harvests, twenty-five hundred dollars to remove an old tree, the softball field. The roots were getting into the sprinkler system on the softball field, damaging some of that. And we'll also make sure to construct a batting cage for the softball team. PO number eighteen is the Bushman Heat and Air for eighty-nine, ninety-five, oh three. That's to repair HVAC on the Agro Cross Street. And then PO number twenty-one, Northwestern Flooring for seventy-six, eighty, eighty-four is to re-trade the stairs at Lincoln, we talked about last meeting. And then child nutrition. Again, blanket purchasers cafeteria, would point out that towards the bottom, there's three employees. Those three employees are hired by the school, work in cafeteria, they're still hold over some money, manager own. Food service management company employs the, the rest of the employees in cafeteria. We still do have those three, so that's why there's a payroll in child nutrition. Other than that, it's all blanket purchasers to your school.
Any questions so far, gentlemen? Three point four, approval of booster club sanctioning requests.
So you have Alba XFA, Four H Booster Club, Upstate Football Boosters, Black and Gold, Electric Gold, and the Gold Club, Band Boosters. There's a couple missing, there's the local thump band. There's a change to, change of officers, so they didn't have payroll again. We will contact the sponsors and should have those next month sanctioned. We do need to sanction those five.
Three point five, approval of activity fund report.
To end the year. The activity fund received seven hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine Every time we pay that, five or ten dollars to the gate, it's amazing how quickly that seven hundred sixty-three thousand. After all expenses were paid, there's left a balance of three hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars in the activity fund. Now that, that's not just FX, that's all, it's probably, there's different things in there, but anyway, pretty, pretty close to what it was last year.
All right. Activity fund fundraisers.
Uh, this is another spreadsheet we look at every year, four, five pages, six pages, seven pages long. These are all the normal fundraisers we approve every year. We'll tell you, we're trying to cut back on our fundraisers as much as possible, especially with the corporate sponsorships now that we have the marketing plan. So the majority of those fundraisers are targeted towards the individual or family-level fundraisers. I won't say cookie dough candidates, but it seems to be what, what happens, you know? There was solid car hopping and things like that. Majority of those fundraisers, those type, in the categories. I would recommend it for all fundraisers.
Three point seven, activity fund inter-accounts transfers.
Cap transfers.
Pardon me?
There wasn't any.
What were you, okay. Not this time, not yet. Three point eight, approval of board policy procedures.
Okay, have two, two policies. We met with the, met with the policy committee and went through some of this. First one, CDA is investment funds. This had been adopted in like twenty thirteen. When we invest our money, the last paragraph that said, general fund will go to general fund. Child nutrition, we're talking about the interest charge. Child nutrition interest will go to the child nutrition fund. It didn't count for the seeking fund or gift fund. So the interest charge in there, they're going back in the general fund. So we just clarified that, copied the language from the general fund, child nutrition, put in place for seeking and gift fund so that we can track the interest that's being earned with the principal better. So particularly the gift fund, I think it's where it's playing this part. We get a gift from, you know, Al State or WISD Foundation and it's sitting in this investment account. I want to know how much interest that earned and take the interest and compound it back on to the.
Back into that specific year.
So that's all, that's all that policy change is doing. Then the next one, it's the one I'm sure that really pairs every school in the state's waiting on. This is the, this is our cell phone policy, personal electronic communication or electronic device policy. It is what the OSBA recommended for the most part. Without us reading it word for word, we'll have a lot of communication going out to parents and things like that once the policy is approved. It is required by law. The policy, just to generalize it, it doesn't say kids can't have their, their phone. It says they can't use their phone, okay? So it's really not a big difference from what's been in the past. It does define personal communication device as anything that's capable of transferring data. So computer, phones, obviously, smart glasses, smart sunglasses, AirPods or earphones, watches, anything that can transfer data, you can't use during school day, okay? According to the new law. Law says it is, it is bell-to-bell during instructional time. We did define bell-to-bell, or we defined instructional time, and I would to include that time before class starts after we open the building and include the time after class ends out until close of building, okay? It seems like a lot of our trouble with cell phones happen at lunch and at breakfast and hallway after school, you know, but those times, it's not instructional, those kind of things. We define instructional time to include those times, basically, kids get to school until they leave school for the regular day, for the instructional day, they can't use their phones, okay? It's all to say that from a discipline side, it has to be a component of it, and we've fought back in the discipline matrix, and next month we'll have a policy that bases the discipline matrix, so that's the person's to go through that, you know? Make it a little more equitable between offenses and people. Anyway, that's the, that's the new cell phone policy, it's required by law. It's recommended by OSBA, it's not, so I recommend to approve that as well.
Any questions on any of three, point one to three point eight?
Move to approve consent agenda items three point one to three point eight.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
It's the new standard report, the super taste report.
We didn't do the principal's report, there's not a whole lot of building, so. Super taste report, we had, I guess I'm going to go, we had a tree root that was just outside the fence on the back corner of right field, softball field. Roots are damaging the irrigation system. They were wanting to build a batting cage there as well, so I made room for that and those kind of things, so that's a proof it's going on on the softball field. Custody's been working real hard on the buildings, getting them ready for reunion weekend in two weeks, two and a half weeks. So reunion, and then school's starting in August, it's right around the corner from that. We'll be using several buses on July nineteenth to help with the community tours that are planned during reunion weekend. WISD said that right now there are a hundred, a hundred and seventy-six people registered for reunion. A hundred and five of those have registered for the tours and they'll have some guests here, so.
Wow.
Yeah, probably a riding, kind of thirty-minute drive around Alba type tour. Roughly forty people per bus probably, so a hundred and five plus guests divided by forty, I mean, we're going to have three or four buses probably going, the tours are from one to three thirty, so.
Will they be stopping at the school sites?
She tell me, I think they'll drive, no, I think it's longer drive by tour. They'll be in, inside the high school, I think they'll drive by the other schools. I believe that's what, I just, does that sound right, Gina?
I don't know, that's a beat great.
Well, I mean, with otherwise, we would have people in the building.
Well, I would imagine if it's a thirty-minute tour around Alba, we're probably not getting off the bus.
Right.
Okay. I just give you.
They get out, I don't envy you.
An hour. And they looked around.
Three hour tour.
No, they could stay thirty minutes in this building, so.
Okay. Thirty minutes going up and down the stairs, I'm like.
That's true. That's true.
So anyway, that's, yeah, two percent's report.
Four point two, reservations, retirements, reassignments.
We have one retirement, Julie Dunnfield, she was our Title One teacher at, at Lincoln. She notified us her retirement effective June twenty-sixth. We'll miss her tremendously and wish her a very happy retirement. We will be looking for a Title One teacher.
Item five, item for current business, discussion with possible board action vote to approve an offer of employment for one-year temporary contract for applicant number one, served by teacher for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Dr. Nicefonger and Mrs. Martini offered employment to Vicki Chester to teach math, have Vicki counted with several years' experience and things. Based on their recommendation, we are recommending to hire Miss Chester for math.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, we've always been having you as part of our team. Five point two, discussion with possible board action vote to approve and offer employment to applicant number one as head high school baseball coach for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
We offered Derek Thomas the position of head high school baseball coach. He is completing his teaching certification application. We still have a number back yet. Once that's completed, we're planning to hire him to teach here at the high school, you know, math or science, you know, it's a schedule, so. I would recommend to hire Derek Thomas for the head high school baseball coach.
Move to approve Derek Thomas as the head high school baseball coach.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Welcome. You're kind of already part of the family, but we'll make you really, we'll show you the special handshake or something. We'll make something up. Welcome, both of you.
Thank you.
You don't need to stay any longer if you don't want to, or you're welcome to stay, so whatever you'd like to do. Okay. Put your walk in the seat.
Thank you.
I don't blame you. Thank you all. Welcome. That will save you there.
Will do.
Five point three, we are, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following salary schedules and assignments for this new year twenty-six and all this. Do you go separately or all together, Ms. Tate?
Altogether.
Altogether, all that she had on me.
Okay, five point three point one is administrative salary schedule. That's the same salary schedule we had last year, per raise the minimum salary schedule for twelve months. It gives a factor increase for each position. So it's a per raise for twelve months. High school principal gets another thirty-five percent, I'm sorry, it's thirty percent. Middle school principal, twenty-five percent, elementary's twenty percent, and the assistant principal fifteen percent. Same as it's been for probably a couple of years. Last year behind me. The certified salary schedule for certified teachers, probably the only ones that changed a little bit. The state did extend the minimum salary schedule out to thirty-five years. Hours was, it was twenty-five, I think we've been extended like thirty-five. The state went up to thirty and we went up to thirty-five, so we were extended five years beyond state. State went up thirty-five years, so went back and kind of did the math on it, it's about a five hundred dollar increase every, every year after like year ten. Before that's a little bit less, but after that's four hundred ninety-three, four hundred ninety-eight dollars, it's a base of five hundred dollars. So we just added five hundred dollars per step for the next five years across the board, and we had extended hours out to forty years. I do think that's a, it's a little feather hat, a recruitment tool. Next year, I think it only affects one or two teachers, I don't know if so it's always that big of a lift for us, but I do think it's, it's important to recognize their service, their years of service.
Today's role of education.
So anyway, the certified salary schedule. The support, let's try, five point three point three, support salary schedule. This is the same schedule as we had last year. I do think, I'm going to say, I do think we probably are going to have to look at raising some of our, our raises for our support staff. Times are changing. It's nothing, nothing more than a cost of living increase, something we probably do need to take a prehard look at that in the next little bit. Anyway, that's the same salary schedules as June. Gives an increase per hour for each, you know, each step. Starts off around ten cents an hour, then after ten years, it's like it hits twenty and goes back to ten anyway, you guys got to have the schedule. Same one as we had last year. Aside from three point four is our extra duty salary schedule. It's, it's the same as it's been as well. Whoever gives, for our coaches in particular, gives the ranges, a lot of our coaches are towards the top end of that range. Same, same extra duty, same type of schedules we had last year.
Okay.
And then, if you don't care, five point three point five is the extra duty assignments. Same heading here. Same assignments we ended the year with. Any new assignments will be added and brought up next month, so it's just probably the same coaches for the next, next twelve months, obviously. Coach Todd, some of that will have to be added next month, we just, we literally just hired him, so. Anyway, that's the salary schedules.
Any questions, gentlemen? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the salary schedules as the ten assignments for fiscal year twenty-six is presented.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Five point four, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following contracts for fiscal year twenty-six. Share Medical Center, H Six Digital Branding, Next Tech Consulting. We do those together, we will do those together, Mr. Bishiers?
Five point four point one is Share Medical Centers for our physical therapy for IP students, five point fours. They charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars for evaluation and a hundred dollars per visit if students are qualified. Again, something we do every year for our special.
Does work well? Great, good, take that.
Five point four point two is H Six Digital Branding. It's a contract with J.C. Heaton to manage our social media presence, and actually does a really good job with that. It's about twenty-two hundred dollars per month. I would, the same as it was last year. Again, I'd recommend to approve that contract. And then the last one is Next Tech Consulting. You know, when Trevor resigned, we contracted Next Tech to handle our IT services and kind of outsourced that. They've got a lot of work. Probably been some, some hiccups along the way, but there was going to be, with the amount of work we've done with our, again, we've replaced every piece of hardware on our network, so for the most part at this point, so. Anyway, their total monthly costs, they're estimating, they did go back, rework it up for last year's contract. There's a hundred and ten workstation, five servers, six sites.
Right.
All the things, so they, they were able to balance some of that and kind of better grasp of what we have and what they're servicing. So they do give us a ten percent discount, principal, whatever, so. Total monthly is seventy-seven, twelve, ten cents, is what they're feeling to be. It's a little bit more than last year, we had fewer workstations than they expected, so. It's a little bit more than last year, but we had fewer workstations than they expected, so.
Turnaround time is sufficient. They're a lot of good.
At least for me, I pretty happy I can give them a call and.
Good, well, and that's, that's hard because they're not visiting here, but it's, you know, it's, everything is certainly run by technology nowadays. And the nice thing, I think, is if they came and did, if something happened, it's work that they've done so they know how to troubleshoot it faster because if something I wired or they wired.
They're, they're a little company.
Good.
I think that speaks for just something.
All right, thank you.
So anyway, those are three contracts.
Any discussion? I entertain a motion.
Move to approve contracts listed in five point four point one, five point four point two, and five point four.
Sorry.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Singleton.
Wow. Any new business?
I don't have any new business.
Hey, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Singleton.